And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Before we approve the agenda, we have an open public forum. Anyone that would like to speak, you have two minutes, if there's anything you'd like to say. Is there anyone out in here for the public forum? Okay, then we'll move forward. Approval of the agenda. Aaron, is there anything?
No.
Rob?
No, sir.
Pete? Julie?
No.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And Lynn?
Nope.
Jenny, do you have anything to add? I just wanted to touch base with the emergency preparedness. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
You're adding that on a new business, F?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Julie and seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on that?
You have any questions on that ordinance?
Okay. If not, I'll... I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if... There's those questions.
So moved.
Motion made by Rob.
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There are no public hearings. New business, Winthrop area foundation request from city.
Donna Shiro approached me a while back about asking if the city would be able to store the lights in the green space on Highway 19, and if the city would be willing to put them up and take them down for them. I talked to Troy about it this morning. He's not sure our equipment will fit in there to be able to do it.
You know, when we do the Christmas tree, we get right up next to the tree with the bucket truck, and you know, then we can just get around it. You know, down there, we'd have to park on the highway or park on the road, and I don't think we'd be able to reach all the way around. Went talking to Donna, I think Jason Sullner's done in the past, and he's got like a...
He's got a boom lift.
A spider lift that, yeah, drives in there and he can... So, we just don't have anything...
To go around.
To go around or go in there, because that's kind of low down in there, too. You couldn't, if you put the truck down in there.
Do we have a storage?
I think we could definitely find a spot to store the lights. For now, but... But just, just putting them up, I don't think we would have...
I think you should leave them up your own. I think that looks pretty cool.
They do look really nice.
Did we get the outlet made permanent?
Actually, what we're doing right now is we're sending in the application to the state. The green space is, belongs to the state.
Okay.
And we're talking to an electrician about burrowing. There is an electrical...
Transformer.
Transformer right across the street on Highland.
Perfect.
And then we would get the... Because right now, they can only light five trees at the most.
That's a good solution.
Yeah.
And Jason's still willing to put the decorations up?
No, I, I think he will be, yes.
Okay.
We just thought, you know, to sustain the program with my, for long term.
Yep, yeah.
I was thinking if not, ask him what he needs for it. Come back to us.
As in rented?
The cost, the cost of rent.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. The resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Brian?
Brian?
Good evening. Some new faces, so I'll just introduce myself quick. Brian Hessel with ISG. Currently working on the 2020 street and utility improvement project. The two resolutions are kind of just formalities. Well, in a way. The one resolution is basically just the city acknowledging that there'll be work done within the, within the city limits, basically for the, for MinDOT. It's just a requirement that they have for, before they'll approve the plans. And then the other is essentially approving the plans and then ordering advertisement, advertisement forbid, excuse me, forbid, and that would be contingent upon state approval. The reason I'm asking for the resolution now versus waiting for the state approval is because I think we'll probably get state approval here within the next week or two, and I'd like to get them out for bids sooner than later, I guess. The ci- the state had a few comments, lingering comments on temporary traffic control, but nothing really as far as like the permanent improvements. And we sent back the updates that they wanted this last week, and then we're hoping to get their final approval in this week, or possibly within the next couple of weeks.
How long do they anticipate the project to last? Do you know? I mean, is there an estimate on that?
We don't give them a hard start date, but we do give them a substantial completion date of September 15th. You know, it all, it all depends on the weather. Last year was pretty tough for construction, but hopefully this year's a little bit better.
Are we running a little late in the ballgame to ask for bids, or are we okay?
No, I don't think so. There's still some other cities I know out there that are just getting approval, I guess, at, at this month's council meeting for, for advertisement for bids. So I don't think we're behind the eight ball too much. You know, generally, we like to get them out maybe, you know, a month, month earlier, but with the additional reviews that we have to do, we had to get, you know, county review and a couple of state reviews. It just takes a little bit longer.
And the second resolution?
They're both, they're both basically, the one is for accepting or approving the plans and then ordering advertisements for bid contingent upon approval from the state. And then the other one is just basically saying the city is acknowledging that there's going to be work on that stated highway within the city limits, basically. They're, they're both essentially saying that they approve the plan, the city approves the plans, yep.
Are we going actually into the state highway when you connect up, or...
They'll be a couple of feet within the right of way just to make that, those, the storm connection and stuff, yep. But no, we're not, you know...
We're not really hindering them.
The shoulder, there'll be some shoulder closures, but that's, that's about it.
One other thing, Troy made copies. There's some streetlight designs that you all have to look at, and at some point, when, when would we make that decision on the streetlights?
That's not part of...
That's ours, right?
Right, so... It's something we want to probably at least touch on at the, at the pre-construction meeting to, you know, figure out when, if, if they're going to be putting in, if the city's going to be putting in new conduit and things like that. You know, they're gonna have to coordinate that with the contractor. And it is in the contract. You know, that coordination's gonna have to be done, so that the people bidding on it are gonna be aware of that.
Is this down the highway or down the street?
The...
Down Carver.
So, we can probably have a discussion on it next month, but I wanted you guys to...
Like that, we wanted to do that the last time, until we were crazy.
Then the only other thing kind of hanging out there is some temporary easements that the, for some work that's going to be done outside the right of way, and I think Aaron's wrapping that up, it sounds like. For example, that retaining wall that's going to be replaced, some of that work takes place outside the right of way, so MinDOT requires obtaining temporary easements for that type of work.
Any questions?
Move approval of both resolutions.
Kelly, I think we have to do them separately.
Separately. Okay, let's do R 2020 dash oh four. Move approval.
Motion made by Rob, seconded by Julie for the first motion, or the resolution. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Move approval, sorry. Move approval of R 2020 dash zero five.
Motion made. And seconded by Julie, a motion made by Rob, seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
What's that?
I missed out on one more thing.
Okay, we have a reading order, first reading for the ordinance, adding city code section 813 dash 01 regarding outdoor wood burning stoves.
Now, this was brought up, I think, January meeting.
Yeah.
And I, Aaron put this together. I got the language from the city of New Ulm. And, you know, if you're, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, too. I just thought I'd present it to you guys if you're interested. If you are, then you can have the first reading. I'll have the planning commission review it at their next meeting and make recommendation also, so...
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Concerns?
Just... I'm just looking to make sure that we're seeing... A furnace to heat a home or to heat an office or shop, correct? We're not talking about someone who has a fire pit or wants to have an outside...
No, no, no. Yep, this is to heat a home, yes.
Okay, I, I just, I saw natural wood, I saw hydronic furnace, I saw other things, but I missed it somewhere in here.
We had, we had gotten in...
Does not apply to cooking or grilling, okay. I just zoned right over that, so, okay, or recreational.
I think some people still in town have wood furnaces, too.
Okay.
Right, but that's...
We're talking about outdoor.
Outdoor.
That's indoor, right, right.
So we're not touching that stuff.
Correct, yep.
Nope, okay.
It can become, the smoke can become a hazard and the, and whatnot.
Trust me, as a guy who has asthma, yeah, I know about it.
So, if you want to have a first reading, you can. If not, it's fine.
Make that motion.
Second.
A motion made by Pete and seconded by Dale to make this the first reading for the new ordinance regarding outdoor wood burning stoves. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City EDA lots.
The EDA met last Friday, and there's four lots that are in the city of Winthrop's name that the EDA has either paid for or put money into. I attached the documentation that goes along the checks, copies of the checks, or the deed, the letter stating that they should deed them over. I, the EDA was just wondering, and maybe Julie, you can expand on this more, too, if the city would be willing to transfer those properties back into the EDA's name.
Well, originally, some of them, I remember the discussion even when one of them that we put in the city's name because we thought there was a tax advantage, and it turns out, there's not. So, had we known that at the time, they would have been put directly into the EDA's name.
Now, the one, the number 12 is the Bauer Building. The Bauer Dental Building, and...
Which one are you looking?
Go ahead.
I'm double checking here now. Which one is it?
12 is the house next to Dairy Queen.
Oh, yeah, this DDA paid 10,000 for that. And then the Bauer Building...
Yep.
Is...
The Bauer Building was donated, but the, but the EDA has put a substantial amount of money.
And I don't have any documentation of that, so...
I know there was 10,000 spent on the cleanup.
Yes. The Bauer Building downtown, um, the Bauer is...
Next to the bank. A little building.
It's, um, let's see.
Number nine.
Number nine, yes. It's not eight, I was getting there. So, yeah, those four.
I would, I don't, but you should get some documentation on what they spent on cleanup, just in case someday somebody...
It was 10,000.
I saw, I, I looked at their... I'm not arguing that, but get a paper or something.
It's, I looked at the audit, and it is in there, two per, two per, two payouts for $5,000 each.
I mean, Judge Judy would frown on us.
It is, it is in the audit. I did see it, so...
So anyway, it's whether you guys want to...
I got a question about 10.
10.
That would be the parking lot behind the grocery store.
Yes.
We got a park in there now.
In the parking lot?
Along the side there.
We have a green space, Honeybee Heights.
That's not that, oh, that's 10?
That's the number 10.
Yeah.
So, since that's a city park, that one's gonna have to stay with the city.
That's up to you guys, yeah.
Or they gotta replat it. I mean, I don't have a problem with having the parking lot, but we got a park in there, so something's gotta get separated.
That's up to you guys.
So is it the entire, the parking lot and the green space, or that?
It's where the, it's between the buildings, the whole lot, between the buildings, yep.
So the garage and the old house?
The garage is, yeah, and the old house, yep.
The, the EDA is not allowed to have green space, Aaron?
It's a city park. You can't have a city park on their property. You have to be on your own property.
Was it designated as a city park?
Yes.
It's not in, it's not zoned yet. It is a city park.
Okay. Wouldn't it make sense to keep it in the EDA if it's a designated park?
That's why...
In the city, and that's fine.
Except, you either need to plat out that section of that lot.
Did the city, how did...
EDA bought the lot, city decided to put a park in there. The city had the title, the title, EDA bought the lot, transferred the title to the city for tax purposes, city put a park in there.
So, should the city reimburse EDA something for this? It's up to you guys.
I don't think the EDA's asking for that, but you know...
Straighten it up. So down the road, somebody says, why is their park, you know, why is the city park not owned by the city?
I mean, that would be up to council.
I think we should just plat.
The lines have been kind of blurry, I think.
That's what we're trying to fix.
Subdivide the lot, you know, which we're not supposed to do, but...
How much money do they have in that park?
I'd have to ask them, so...
At least 13.
We budget, we, yeah, the council...
There's at least 13 in there.
She got some grant money, didn't she, from the...
Is it part of that lot that's a park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at the picture, that green area on the left side, on the, on the left-hand side of 10, that's basically a park now.
That house is torn down, yeah.
So, part of it's park and part of it's gonna be parking lot?
And it's also used for public activity, because that's where they do the Christmas and the country, so...
So it makes sense to put all of it as parks?
It's just easier to leave it all in city.
I don't know that we ever, I mean, I mean, use it, so I don't think it would ever get sold, so, yeah.
So...
And then you guys can do, you can split it up however you want, or whatever, you know?
Start a war, but we need to straighten it out. The klegis will buy.
Probably just leave that one in city's name.
I think it's the simplest solution. I mean, I hate that it's not in personal.
Well, it was 115 for the building.
Everything, that's the problem.
It wasn't, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
You know, and, and again, you know, maybe we buy the green space portion. Just, we need to get it straight.
Or maybe we trade in some other lot.
Exactly, and that's probably the simplest solution.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at the other lots we have available.
Because they want a few of the other lots anyway, we'd like to switch over to them, and that might be the easiest way to do it.
That would be, yeah, that's a great idea.
Then there's no, you know, we spent city money or any of that going on, so...
Could we take a look at that and maybe reconsider?
Leave this, leave this lot out of this one?
Should we, yeah, leave it out this, this one?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve leaving lot 10 out.
Leaving lot 10 out, okay.
To be dealt with later.
Second that.
Oh, I see.
Motion made by Dale and seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
You don't want to be like Minneapolis for the park board.
I, I think that's something the city could maybe use something. All right. Unfinished business, industrial park lots, condition.
Yeah, you get your e-prep on there.
Oh, okay, I put that under the boards. I just wanted to, um... Actually, I was hoping Karen was gonna be here, I was gonna tell her. She's our emergency management person. I, I want to meet with her, touch base on some of the things. I also want to let you know, League of Minnesota City sent something out to the cities. Everybody's concerned about this coronavirus, talking about the city being prepared. And I'm gonna have Jenny send out a copy of that report. It's just recommendations that they have. Some things are way over the top, and some things aren't. But I wanted you guys to look at...
Close the schools?
What?
Close the city.
There's so much, we, the school would have to make that decision, but it's things like employees, you know? If you have more, if you have employees out that have positions that they need to be here, things like that. But I just wanted you guys to read it. So, are familiar with it, and I just want to touch base with Karen to see if she's been in contact with the county.
Actually, Jeremy Templin stopped in Friday, and we talked about it a little bit, and, you know, a lot of that would be done at the county level, and we talked about it at administrator's lunch a little bit, too. You know, so we're, we're talking about it. I, I didn't get that report until late Friday, so I haven't, and today was crazy, so I haven't really had a chance to look at it. So, I'm gonna send it out to the council, and I'll look it over and see if there's things we need to address, you know, policies we need to pass, and things like that we need to do to get prepared. But, yeah, I think a lot of it is more preparing our city if our staff can't come to work. The police department are all out sick, and Troy and Chris and Oscar are out sick.
Well, you know, the EMS, you know, our ambulance crew, we want to make sure that they have the appropriate gear. That's one question I had for the fire department tonight, too. Is there gear that you would wear in cases where you're called for, for something?
I know there's actually an email going around with civil county chiefs right now about it. Everyone is, how everybody's set up with the equipment. I know, I think for us, the biggest one is the H, N95 masks. I was, I hadn't had a chance to get down to see, make sure we're good on those. Do you remember?
We did have some of them at one time. We'd have to...
Yeah, see where we're at on that, but I know the county sheriff's office, too, was, you know, emergency management. We needed some, they were gonna get us some, so I was hoping to get back to him this week and see where we were at and at least get our side of that.
We want to make sure that our people are protected out there, and, and make sure that people are, you know, understand that, yes, we are on top of what's going on, and it can change, you know? Look how much has changed in a day. Every day, something changes, and I'm hoping it's gonna be similar to the flu and...
I just have a tickle in my throat.
You don't have to come to work for 14 days.
Only with the lime, yeah.
That was something they, they did talk about, too, you know, mandatory leave. You have to be gone for 14 days. What happens to your sick pay? What happens when that's gone? Sick days, I mean, different things like that. So the report's worth, worth reading and becoming familiar with. All right, that's all I had there. Industrial park lots, the conditions. You have the conditions all wrote up?
Yes, they are, should be in your packet.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure. I ran them by Aaron and Melissa, and they said that looked like what was discussed, so...
It was just those four, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's anything else...
We should probably specify on that, where it says return, or what's the last one?
A purchaser will have two years to complete building.
You might want to put a little subheading on there that if you default, it goes back to the city, and all you pay is administrative fees and documentation. There's no penalty, there's no loss of... Remember, we had that with the houses that, we should, you should go back for flat rate, you pay the deed fees, you walk away.
If they did not build, or if they change their mind, something like that.
If default property, if default...
Yeah, your money's refunded less, less the deed fees.
Less.
Deed and attorney fees, that we won't cover. They'll, you know, two, 300 bucks, it doesn't cost that much.
Let's make that number five.
They know there's an out, and there's...
And then, no, it says the city may require some or all of these. At what, what point? I mean, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want a lot...
I look at it three ways. If you're talking about a new business coming in, that's one thing. If we walk, if we're looking at an existing business expanding, that, that, yeah, I mean, we're talking two different things.
The other question is, do you have to buy a whole acre? Can you buy a half? Will we subdivide? Because I, right now, is it platted out in seven lots, or is it just open? So, you can, you can purchase in impartial lots, then? How do we enforce number three? Actually, pretty easily. There's a deposit, or we can forgive payments like we did with the Hanson Drug Building.
And that would be for like new business coming in?
It's not, and I don't, and I don't like this, it, it needs to be will. And it is what it is, because then we're picking and choosing, and we can't pick and choose from one business to another what we're gonna enforce. Let me pose a hypothesis, sir. Let's say we have an existing business that has to increase their warehouse storage. Right. Just throwing it out there. Yep. But they're not gonna increase the number of bodies they're gonna hire. Which is why I was asking, how do we do number three? This is, this was my suggestion last month, we only had a couple of us, so it just kinda, we, we came to a general ease solution. Nobody, you know, no poking. So, let's say, for example, entity A needs a warehouse for storage. It's cold storage. It's not a lot of tax money, it's not gonna create any jobs. I think we should limit how many acres can be sold to cold storage only with no job equivalency. So maybe, you know, well, here's Winfield, for example, they're sitting on about two and a half, almost three acres. So if we were to say, limit, cold storage can only be three acres of the seven acres. So if perhaps a local business wanted to increase their warehouse space, that would be limited, and an FTE requirement would not be allowed, not be required on those particular three acres, but everything else would.
Section two...
That makes any sense.
Is in the EDA's name?
That needs to be a city.
That's, was put in the EDA, that, yeah.
Needs to be, and that may be the swap.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, yeah.
Part of, part of the swap, but we have to have, we don't want to have a local business say, you know, you're not gonna help me out. I'm just gonna go somewhere else. So, I think if we should require it, but there are, there is a limit, how do we say this? The property is limited to three acres to be used for a non-FTE equivalent. Anything over three acres requires FTE. Or something to that. Ask the lawyer, he's the smart guy. I think he understands where I'm going here, but I don't know how to say it.
I'm just thinking, these are things that you would like to see.
Right.
Once you have somebody in front of you with a proposal, then you are gonna determine at that time.
And I think that's why the may is in there. I think that was Aaron's decision or suggestion that we use may. I understand the will, and I agree, but I don't want to yet lose a local business, possibly, or, it's just a hypothesis.
I would rather leave it at may.
And that's kind of where I'm at.
You can't, no, what if you have a really good business prospect, and they start out and it's a little slower than they anticipated? And they're not at two full-time, but it's gonna get there.
And that's where we've, that's where the forgiving of a loan payment...
Well, that's where I would go to number three, though, is the enforcement of.
Right.
I would put a time. What are you talking about?
Right.
Within two years of build-out, or within five years of up and running?
And maybe you put down an additional fee per acre that is returned to you when you hit the goal. Whatever, like we did with the Hanson Drug. Created so many jobs, the last payment was forgiven. Maybe we say, you have five years to make the payments, we're not gonna take it in one payment. You're gonna make five payments, and if you meet the requirement, we forgive the last payment.
Or maybe you could give an extension.
Or an extension, yeah.
If they're working towards it, and they could come to the council and say, hey, you know, it was a bad winter, or, you know...
Up to the time, though, yeah, not perpetual.
Because then it's a may, it gives us a little bit of room to play. We have a way to enforce it, you know?
I just don't want maybe a local business go out there and we say one thing, and then a new business were to come into town, and we don't enforce the same four things on them. The new, the current business folks in town are gonna be like, well, wait a minute, you made me do all these, and you're telling them not to.
Right.
That's why I was going to will instead of may.
Yeah. And that's, it's a horse of peace.
I want it to be easy, and I want someone to buy it and use it, but I also want, like you said, I don't want it to be cold storage.
Well, I'm also thinking this would be much more of an issue if we had people lined up knocking on doors.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Which is why I liked, I liked that we did the four and only four, because I want it as simple as possible.
Right.
So when they come in, we say, this is it. Here's your, here's the covenants for that property, or, well...
Well, could you say it, like, if you're an existing business, you have these requirements? If you're new, a startup, you know, I know that type gets a little cumbersome, but...
And then you open up the discrimination thing, too. Because now you're discriminating against, well, he's local, so he gets a break.
Yeah.
It's not a level playing field, and that's where will makes it a level playing field.
Yeah. Whereas, personally, not with my counsel hat on, I would prefer to help out the local people because they're, they've already been here paying taxes. But as a city entity, we can't play favorites that way.
We cannot. It has to be a level field.
Just trying to speculate on what, you know...
That's what I'm worried about. If we say will, there could be something really good out there, and if our hands are tied because we said it will meet these four criteria, then we're gonna wish we had left a little bit of flexibility.
And that's where may. You know, maybe we specify, if it's cold storage, it's this, and if it's anything else, it's that. That's your discriminator.
So are we looking, is this information, or are we looking to vote on this?
Well, we recommended them, you coming back or something, we could still...
Yeah.
We can put it on again next month. There's nobody beating down the door like Julie says.
I got an idea.
And you're not discriminating, it's, there's some distinctions to be made. And you're not discriminating. It's, there's some distinctions to be made. If you have a rational basis for making a different deal with someone than another person, then you're fine.
A documented rational, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense.
That's why we hired that guy.
So, are we saying will or may?
Could.
Should.
I suggest to yourself the flexibility.
Probably, possibly oughta.
I, I agree with Aaron.
So, you're saying with the city council, may require any or all of these conditions?
Yeah.
Reserves the right to require any or, or just leave it at that, any or all of these conditions. That is the may.
If you're gonna have a may, then you know, you need to state, you need to state that in one and two, that the dollar amounts may be changed depending on the city requirements. They may be increased.
Dollar amounts may be increased depend, depending on city requirements?
On the, on the, on the negotiation of the city requirements with the, with the business entity. Because if somebody comes in and says, I'm buying it, I want cold storage, I'm not putting any employees in, we paid sixty thousand dollars for one little lot over there. Selling at twenty-five thousand is not, you know, it's, it's kinda negative. But if that is the criteria, it's flat out, I'm buying it and this is what I'm putting in and I'm not hiring anybody, maybe we might want to get a little bit more than the twenty-five thousand it's assessed at. Value-wise, it's probably worth a little more than that if somebody was coming to town. Twenty-five thousand an acre is pretty reasonable for business property. Sir, I'm sorry, you've gotta, you've gotta.
My understanding is you're putting together some criteria that you're gonna give your staff.
If somebody walks in, so they have the rules, yeah.
Yeah, but you're not at all binding yourself to these things when you're waiting till somebody comes in and says, let's, let's talk.
Right.
Then you negotiate the terms.
Okay.
I think we should leave it just the way it is.
I'm with you.
Reserve the right. We reserve the right to require any and all of these.
Go with the industrial park conditions as presented.
With the fee thing, the, the, with the fee back?
Yeah, with the addition of number, on number four.
Just that, there's no, there's no buyer's remorse down the road.
With the addition of if default property returns to the city, less deed and attorney fees.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right.
I second that.
Okay, motion made by Julie, seconded by Dale to go ahead and approve the industrial park conditions of sale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, city administrator.
The observation well equipment has been installed and I will be finishing up the grant paperwork for the monitor soon. Um, I attended the APPA meeting, disaster training. There was a lot of good information. Uh, so things I will need to review and prepare are mutual aid agreements, disaster volunteer agreement, um, and damage assessment templates. Uh, one of the takeaways was the APPA emergency preparedness tabletop exercise that I talked to Troy briefly about this morning. And I talked to Jeremy Templin about and Karen, and I haven't talked to Justin yet, but it's something where it's, it's called a disaster in a box and you can pick, like a tornado or, I know. It's a tornado or a flood or a, you know, an active shooter situation or something. And they give you all the materials that you need to have a tabletop exercise to go through the disaster.
I'll take tornado for two hundred, Alex.
Oh, they're free. They're free.
I've been through this.
So, it would, I think it would be something worth looking into just to go through the motions with, with all the emergency management and hopefully get the county involved and it probably won't happen.
So, you can game plan it, you can simulate, play the scenario.
And then, um, it probably won't happen till the end of summer, though, because it takes a little time to get everybody coordinated with, but I wanted to let you know about it. Um, I talked to Tim Becker about that property and then he said he would like to have the city sign a maintenance agreement similar to our county's state aid highways. Um, but then I talked to Redhead Aaron, look over that, and you want to explain a little bit about having the.
Is that thirty-two?
Yes, or thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Thirty-two is the one that goes through town on, on the highway, or Hennepin Street.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's the one with the mowing.
That's the one I was reviewing, yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So, the thirty-three is.
Yeah.
On the southeast. It's kind of a messed up area over there because it was originally state property and then it went to county and they, the lines are. It's messed up. So, there's, the county owns, you know, jagged mines further back into some lots than others. And the right way to do it would be to replat that area and the county would have to be willing to convey their extra that they would never need for the right of way back to those property owners. But that's gonna be costly and time-consuming and would the county want to convey it back? So, it's, seems crazy, but it's kind of a complicated and expensive process that, why?
Not expensive.
So, I don't really know.
So, we could sign the maintenance agreement and then we would mow that.
And then we charge.
I don't know if we'd get any payment for it.
No, we'd be, that would be part of what the county, you know, the city wanted to bring that up with the county, like, hey, you know what, look here. We're mowing more than just, you know, whatever, ten feet. Yeah, it's all of this. And Mr. Shower's aware of that, you know, he did.
He knows.
Research on that, so, you know, it's hard for them to argue. Hey, this is county property.
They have those sentenced earth people that come over and mow.
Yeah.
The garage and that, how long would it?
According to Tim, they don't have any mowers small enough to do that.
Oh, boy.
Yes, yeah.
Some slings.
Tell them to buy some.
Whoa, whoa, don't go there.
But I would just like to have something done before the grass starts growing, so I can at least prepare staff to mow it or, you know.
I, I must say, the county is not very, uh, because of that piece of property by me, I mow it because I wait for them to mow it. It's ten feet tall.
Yeah.
I mean, but, uh, they're not the best neighbors.
Okay.
That's, I think that's something that could just be addressed in a maintenance agreement. And maybe that would be their incentive to.
To do something.
To buy more.
To buy more.
Okay.
So, um, should we just wait with that for now? Okay. Um, we'll wait.
We'll see what their maintenance agreement is.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, I've been working on the municipalities meeting. It'll be in Woburn on April seventh. Uh, so far, we have lined up Lisa Hughes with deed to speak and I talked to Jeremy about having, um, Andy Hayden come. He's the Sibley County Emergency Management Person. So, he's gonna try to get him to come, too. Uh, Matthew's looking into a new company, pressed us credit card payments. The current program we have is not integrating with Banyan very well. Melissa said the FEMA reimbursement has been approved. We should be getting about forty-four thousand dollars for that. Melissa's waiting on a quote from Bob for the window hardware. Uh, I haven't gotten it yet. Um, Melissa and Troy met with Troy Walsh, our loss control specialist, for his annual visit and it cleaned up a lot of stuff, I think, that was required, so that's good. And I've been given notice that Nathan and Logan are not coming back to mow the summer. So, that will be on the agenda for next month to advertise for lawnmower and still no railroad permit, so.
Jenny, remind me what the FEMA reimbursement was for?
For the pavement upheavals.
That's okay, okay, thank you.
So, oh, and then EDA, I spent twenty hours on EDA stuff this month. I'm updating the brochure. I updated the website. Uh, Julie caught a, a error on the Sibley County website, so I had John, sent him some information to update it on there. Um, I'm planning on doing some business visits with local businesses and handing out the updated brochure and just stopping and introducing myself and what the EDA does and if they are interested in borrowing money or whatever. Um, and then I sent out letters to six commercial rental property owners to see if they're interested in putting their properties on our website. I haven't gotten a response yet. Um, I'm gonna put the Bauer building on at some point and just take some pictures and put it on that the price is negotiable. And then Dave and I have been discussing a roadside attraction idea. Um, he brought it up to Winterbopp Opportunities and Arlis is really excited about it, so. And that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
No. And Eric, you said there was nothing?
Stuff I worked on is covered.
Okay. Troy?
Water side of it, we had water main break, uh, Friday, Thursday, Friday, down the south cover, Melon's house.
I was, I was driving by there, I thought, what happened down there?
Yeah, it's just a, that short section, so it wasn't, wasn't too bad.
There was quite a hole that you missed filling in.
We, uh, we stopped and filled it in today, so. I think that water washed or something. But, yeah, we stopped and filled it in today.
Okay.
Um, that, that's water side of it. Street, much, not much, um, electrical. I know Jenny talked about it last month when I was gone, but kinda got those three projects lined up. We're getting bids on transformers, wire, all that stuff, so kinda want to get those three crossed off to list. They've been on there for a while, so. Um, and then the street lights that Jenny handed out. Um, I don't know, that's just my ideas, what I thought looked nice. Um, it's not set in stone. I'm just looking for, for ideas, but not to be pushy, but.
I think we need a little updating.
We need to get something going sooner than, sooner than later, because we'd have to get this stuff in order, because they're gonna tear up the streets. And like Brian was saying, I do plan on running conduit, pulling on the wire. So, if the wire went bad, you could still pull the wire back through. But, so this is, um, this is what I got. The prices are on the other sheet, so, I don't know, looking for some.
And are you looking at the fourteen or the twenty, twenty-two foot?
He'd have to go to twenty-five.
I like the both. Um, with the, with the short one, um, we'd need twelve for the whole thing. He's got a kind of a, for the lighting and, uh, he's got a whole program. He's got it. But I don't know, he, like he said, you could switch it out, you could put the bigger ones in the corner.
And that's what we kinda talked about, putting the bigger ones on the corner and putting the smaller ones between.
You can, you can do whatever you want. This is like, like I said, that's, I'm just throwing this out there.
How many of the tall ones would you?
Uh, so maybe one for the corners, so maybe one, two, three, four, five, six. And you could split the smaller ones between the bigger ones. Um, so I got this from JT Services. He kinda sent this to me in a rush. He was on his way to Florida. So, he, but he'd said he'd, he'd give us a, a better idea and he'd come talk to you guys, too.
Okay.
But this is who bought up all the street lights, through all the LED lights, we get them through him. Um, he's, he actually gave this stuff to Gordy a couple of years ago, too, and Gordy's dealt with him for years, so this is kind of who we deal with for the lights. And, uh, going back to, so you see the plans hanging on there?
Yep.
There's like a T-slot on the side of the pole. So, you just basically put a bracket in there and you tighten a nut. So, you can put flags on there, you can put, uh, double banners, you can put flower pots. All that stuff's extra, but it's down in the accessories. That, I'm not sure.
I kinda like this one better anyway, but.
You're just talking about going the.
For now, yep, for now. And then I thought, well, we'd see further down the road. And he said, these have been around for a while and he says they're not going anywhere. It's just an anodized aluminum pole.
So.
So, pretty standard. Um, the shorter ones are like.
Carver, right?
Shorter ones are kinda what's in Gaylord, pretty much, they're that. And those big taller ones, if you're going into North Mankato.
Yeah.
It's like on the first, on the first, no, the first bridge when you're coming in there, around there, so. But, I don't know.
Did you say how long it takes to, to get them?
He said it's pretty stock.
Yeah, they're pretty quick.
Okay.
So.
And this would be one of the last things done.
Yes.
That project.
Yep. We, we'd have to, um, like I said, put conduit, pull wire and, um, probably put a sonotube in with concrete for a base, so. But, so there'd be extra cost and, and that, but.
All right, so you're gonna get some more information on this?
Yeah, yeah, and I just brought this to you guys to see what you thought about it, you know, and think it over, so.
I like that one.
I like.
Did, uh, you get any information on that truck?
Yeah, yep. I was gonna talk to Jenny about this, but anyways, it's all switched over. We're just finishing up some lighting and all that stuff. But actually, the salesman called me. He has someone interested in that truck, the old one, the old cab over.
Good.
Um, so, that was gonna be a discussion for another time, but what do you, how do you guys want to do it? We got an interested party.
What year's that truck?
It's sitting in Lake Crystal, nineteen sixty-six.
See ya, bye.
Sitting in Lake Crystal. The guy, we won't have to touch it ever again.
Bye.
You know, otherwise, if we were gonna put on sealed bids, we'd have to go down and get it, drive it back up here and put it out on bids.
It's an old cab over truck.
So.
What about the new furniture? They were brought up about the value of the.
I haven't heard, have you heard anything else?
No, no one's brought any, any estimates into it.
No one's brought anything here.
It's that old sixty-six there, yeah.
Okay. What do you want, I was gonna bring that up, oh. I guess that would be totally up to you guys, too. Do we have the guy put offering and see what he's offering?
It's box and all.
Nope, just a cab.
Just a cab.
Just a cab. Coach is old, it's, it's.
Well, what are you gonna do with it anyway?
Right, we just put it on bids here.
Yeah.
Somebody buys it if we're lucky, so.
So, it's surplus property?
Yep.
Is it's old city, uh, public works?
Yeah, it used to be a fire truck and then the city took it over, public works, now, so.
It's surplus, you can declare it surplus. So, make sure you take the city logos off if you have it dirty.
This is not partially owned with the townships?
Nope, nope, nope.
So, we need a motion to do that?
This is that old international cab over that we host them with and.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, do you, uh.
We can discuss it a different time, but the salesman actually called me Friday afternoon.
I would, I would say, yeah.
Motion to market as surplus, remove the logos, get it sold.
Second.
Motion made by, um, Rob, go ahead and sell it, uh, seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
Ain't worth driving out and picking up.
What are we gonna do with that, thirty bucks? General fund, baby.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Okay, um, fire department.
All right, a couple of things we got going on right now. Uh, we actually are in the process of applying for the FEMA grant, uh, for this year. Um, we went through a guy that's done a bunch of fire departments, Neil Hyeroffer. Uh, he's up from Belgrade. He's, I don't, got about forty fire department grants he's working on right now. So, uh, he's been pretty successful. His charge rate for the grant is five hundred fifty bucks. If we get the grant, we get up to five hundred back, so he's pretty reasonable. Anyways, the grant we're working on, we're going after new air packs. Uh, our current air packs, we purchased on FEMA grant in two thousand and six. So, those tanks will actually be, the tanks, they'll be expired in, uh, next January. And they're technically, at that point, they're past their lifespan and we aren't legally to use them. So, right now, we have fifteen packs and then every fireman has their own mask, so what we're shooting for is we're adding two more. Uh, be seventeen new air packs with seven extra masks. Uh, project cost roughly is about a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. A new, a pack with masks, anywhere from seven to eight grand a pop, depending on the options and extras and what you go with. Um, and then we're also adding two sets of turnout gear, so we're looking at approximately a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars pending FEMA. You know, they'll, they'll award a certain amount, so it could be less than that, too. But, uh, so that's what we got cooking with the grant. Uh, actually, we've got it to review, so I just kinda started looking at it today. And by the fourteenth of March, I believe it closes and it'll get submitted. So, uh, when that happens, well, he, once it's submitted, some new FEMA laws, you have to, they'll submit the check or the bill, he'll submit the bill, we'll have to get it paid right away. Um, that's just FEMA's, FEMA's deal. And then when, pending we get the grant, uh, we'll get reimbursed at the five hundred, so. Um, as far as turnout, so with that, you know, we get ourselves up to code, we be compliant with our packs. Let's see what else I got in my notes here. Oh, and then also, we had two sets of turnout here, so you've probably noticed in the budget, the last few years, we've been buying turnout gear every year. So, uh, for two thousand and nineteen, we ordered five more sets and just to get, get it, because we had a lot of packs, we had nine packs that were two thousand and two. Or nine sets of gear that were two thousand and two, and they were almost supposed to be ten years old. So, we ordered also another five right away. We kinda did it at the same time, but he billed us and.
Yep.
And so, we got, so we got ten on the way right now.
So, we got the ten set disc coming?
Yep.
But he split it in half, so.
So, we saved a little bit of money there, too, so. Um, so with that, once those sets come, we'll be down to two, two sets, two sets, two sets that will be expired, uh, after those new sets come. So, applying for the grant, being we've got new gear, we couldn't really apply for any more turnout gear. Um, so we applied for the two sets. I've got one set that'll expire in twenty-one, but he said, well, we don't want to try throwing one set in there when it's not expired yet, so. Um, so, if pending we get the grant, we'll be in good shape. Um, and then.
Now, do you have to, you don't have to purchase this until you know what the grant is going to be?
Yes, yeah, so we won't do, really do anything until we know when we get awarded the money.
Yep.
Uh, he's thinking, uh, maybe mid-April, end of April, they might start going out first round of grants. So, you know, we should know sometime by, hopefully, yeah, June at the latest.
We don't know the amount of a grant that we'd be getting.
Yeah, so we would get, uh, so, you know, if they awarded us the total project, it would be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then the city's responsible for five percent, which is sixty-two hundred, about sixty-three hundred, which, you know, we've got, I mean, we've got budgeted money just for between packs.
We'll take that.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's cheap for a hundred, for all the air packs. And then one other issue that we do have with our. And then one other issue that we do have with our current air packs, the company or the brand, they've stopped making air packs for fire departments. So we're on a matter of time when we aren't going to be able to get parts, and we're starting to have to buy some parts every once in a while, stuff's starting to go bad, so. So hopefully, the grant goes through. Otherwise, yeah, that's kind of where we're at, waiting to see now on this grant, and go from there. We'll let you know when we find out, so.
That sounds great. Thank you. Are you electric? We did talk about that bit, so, anybody here from the ambulance?
No, but I did get an email from Miranda today that they are getting some bids on a new rig, and she will be sending those to me once she gets them, so.
Okay. That'll make township smile.
Karen, is there anything?
Hi there. All I have for you is my email, I just wanted to discuss the SRO.
What email?
Last month, on the council day, council meeting day, Officer Houston did resign. He was doing fine on our training program, he just decided that it wasn't for him. So disappointing, but glad that, you know, we found out early. We did, I didn't give his resignation at that meeting, because we, Jenny and I wanted to meet with Lonnie Seifert and see where he thought, you know, the program would be, so the next day, he was in the city, and we met with Kevin, he still wants to go ahead with the program. So, wasn't sure just because of the stated school district, there's some changes and whatnot going on financially there. So I guess we are interested in hosting the position with the blessing of the council and going ahead.
Do you need a motion on that to go ahead and?
Yes, sir.
Okay, entertain a motion, go ahead and post. Motion made by Pete.
I'll second. Oh, it was Rob, wasn't it?
I made it.
Oh, you made it?
Yes, so moved, sorry.
And Lynn seconded.
Yeah, I'm throwing my voice.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Was there anything else in Karen?
No, not this month, sir.
Okay, very good. Planning Commission report.
Oh, there is not one in close, that's a lie, we didn't have a meeting, sorry.
Just going to say, I don't remember seeing that. Iris Fiber Report, that was there.
We have not met.